Public meeting of the Chappaqua Library Board of Trustees Tuesday, January 19th, 2021 to order. Happy New Year to everyone. And we're going to start with the proposed slate of officers for 2021. In accordance with the Chappaqua Library Bylaws, Article 3, Officers, Section 2, Election in Term of Office, see below, which is, which I will read later. The following slate of officers is presented for the 2021 calendar year. The election will take place at the beginning of the January 19th, 2021 board meeting. And the slate is President Ronnie Diamondstein, Vice President Elizabeth Haymson, Finance Officer Lain Shay, and Secretary Nishat Hadari. And according to the article in the bylaws for officers, Section 1, Officers, the officers of the library shall be the president, a vice president, a finance officer, and a secretary. Section 2, Election in Term of Office, the board shall, at its first meeting in each calendar year, elect the above-named officers from their own number to serve from the date of the meeting at which they are elected until the subsequent January and thereafter, until their respective successors are duly elected. Okay, so we need a motion to adopt this.
Sure, I'll make a motion.
I think Sho Ray had her hand up, Liz.
I move that we approve this slate as presented.
So a second. Liz, do you want to second it then?
Sure, and I switched my screen so I can see all of you. Sorry about that.
That's okay. Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No one's opposed. Okay. So moving right along, the minutes from the December 15th meeting. Can I have a motion because we're going to vote on them, right? Did we decide we were going to vote on the minutes? Yes? Nobody remembers.
Don't remember that we were going to vote on them.
Okay.
We're going to enhance them.
Oh, we were enhancing them. Okay, so maybe, okay. So any comments about the minutes? Are they all good? So we will then accept the minutes of December 15th, 2020 as read. Next on the agenda is the Long Range Strategic Plan. So Andrew, I'm turning that over to you.
Excellent, thank you. The Chappaqua CSD Public Library is currently looking for community engagement to assist us with developing our long-term strategic plan. We have an ad ready to go out stating the Chappaqua CSD Public Library is excited to announce upcoming public engagement opportunity for the 2021 Strategic Plan. The 2021 Strategic Plan will outline a systematic process for moving forward towards an agreed-upon, community-wide vision. This plan involves the development and prioritization of strategic goals and measurable strategies. The mission of the Chappaqua CSD Public Library is to be a welcoming community center for human interaction, intellectual stimulation, and cultural engagement, or enrichment, sorry, for people of all ages. To provide, through books and other informational, educational, and cultural materials, including non-print resources, events, and programs, a place where the experience of the past can meet the needs of the present and future. To provide access to its own materials and to sources beyond its collection for people onsite and in other locations, and to work with institutions, organizations, and individuals within the community in the pursuit of these goals. The responsibilities are to prepare. The committee will gather information from our staff and the community relating to library services and materials, identify our strengths and weaknesses, determine any external threats, identify long-term trends in the library field, and determine the future goals for the library. We are asking for letters of interest and a resume to be sent to the director, that is myself, at afarber@wsmail.org.
Very good, and that'll go out to all our sources as we've done in the past to engage the community. And Andrew, do you want to say anything else about the, who will be on the committee of the board and the staff? We know that Liz and Nishat will be joining you and...
Along with myself, our head of Adult Reference, our head of Children's Reference, the head of Young Adult Services, as well as the president of the Friends, and then we are looking for other community members to join as well.
That's great, so people can get in touch with Andrew if they would like to join that committee. So next, speaking of committees, next is I'm going to appoint a Personnel Committee. And the members of the committee will be Andrew and Sho Ray has graciously agreed to join the committee, and Marge Perlin, and then I will also be on that committee. And we'll start working soon, so that's committees. And then the bylaw, I wanted to, I had mentioned that at some point I wanted to make, have the bylaws codified. So I had sent the, what I'd like for us to do is have five standing committees, which would be the Communications Committee, Finance Committee, Personnel Committee, Policy and Bylaws Committee, and then a Building and Grounds Committee. Because it's important that we have these committees codified so that there's, in the future, there is no question about whether we have a policy committee or not, which happened in the past. And it's, that's very important. I had sent the changes that I wanted to, that I thought we should make to our attorney. I haven't heard back from her, so the plan is that I'll go over this when we have our work session on February 2nd, and then we can discuss it, and then we can decide when we, you know, how we want to proceed with that. So that's the bylaws. The Treasurer, as we, you know, last month we accepted the resignation of our Treasurer. So we are officially putting out this announcement. Well, it's already gone out, that's to the public, seeking a new Chappaqua Library Treasurer. And it's, the announcement reads, "The Chappaqua Central School District Public Library is recruiting a new member to its voluntary Board of Directors to serve as Treasurer." And then the mission statement is read. Andrew just read it, I'm not going to read it to everyone now because we just heard it from Andrew. And then the responsibilities are, "Responsibilities include maintaining bank accounts, advising on investments, reviewing checks prior to release for accuracy, and requisite documentation and approvals, signing checks and reviewing bank statements." And we're asking people to send a letter of interest and their resume to the Chappaqua Board email, which is chaboard@wsmail.org. Okay, so that is, that's that. Then the next thing on the agenda is the Conflict of Interest disclosures. And every year we have to fill that out, and Andrew will be sending us, normally we do it in person, but we're not in person, so he'll be sending us the forms to complete and send back to him. So, any questions on any of these things from anyone? Okay, so now, thank you so much to Colleen Harris and Jeff Shaver for joining us this evening to go over the draft of your auditor's report, and thank you for your patience in letting us do our opening business. So I invite you to just, we're ready to hear what you have to say. I know some of us have some questions, but we want to hear your presentation first, so.
Absolutely. Pleasure to be here. My name is Jeff Shaver, I'm a partner with PKF O'Connor-Davies. Also in attendance is Colleen Harris. She was the in-charge accountant, who essentially was, you know, the lead auditor in the field. And she, you know, between her and me, we, you know, performed most of the work. What I'd like to do is go briefly through the financial statements, and then afterwards, go through the draft management letter. Everything at this point is in draft form, so if there's, you know, and as you said, there's some questions. If there's any revisions, anything to be made, we can still do that. So everything is still in draft form. You can interrupt me as I'm going through. And I'll just have to take notes, you know, and we'll certainly try to address everything. Is it possible that I share my screen?
Andrew, can you...
Yes, let me share that right now with you. Okay, you are now a co-host, so you should be able to share your screen.
Okay. Can everyone see?
Yes.
Okay, great. So I'm just going to skip right down. I'm not going to go through every page. You'll, this is a 44-page document. The first three pages are the independent auditors' report, directly after the table of contents. And in summary, the auditor's opinion in draft form, it's known as an unmodified opinion, also referred to as a clean opinion, and that's the most favorable opinion that the library can receive. What that means is the financial statements, the numbers that are in the financial statements and the no disclosures are fairly and accurately stated. On page eight of what we refer to as Management's Discussion and Analysis, there's a comparative summary of the statement of net position and the changes in that position or statement of activities. In summarized form, you can see total assets at the end of 2020, worth $3,707,000. Current assets, $1,333,000. That's primarily cash. $1,293,000 of that is cash. Similar to last year, $1,281,000. The capital assets of the library, $2,373,000. Current long-term liabilities, at 2030, were $4.4 million. The long-term liabilities of $4 million consists of a net pension liability. That's the amount from the New York State retirement system. The library's proportionate share of that. OPEB liability or other post-employment benefit obligation, of $2.9 million. That's the value of health insurance for current and future retirees as determined by your actuary. And compensated absences, which are accrued vacation and sick time that will be paid out upon employee's retirement, about $60,000. And what's left over is what's referred to as net position. In governmental accounting, we carve out a portion of the equity or net position for your capital assets. So that would be $2,373,000. Which means it's, yes, it's an asset, and they're available for use at the discretion of the library. Or you can't use those assets for anything, anything other than their intended purpose, and not in the form of cash.
Jeff, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
And I don't know if I heard this correctly. Did you say that they estimate the payout for sick time?
Yes.
Well, we don't pay people, we don't pay for unused sick time.
It may just be vacation time.
Oh, okay.
I may have misspoke because it's just, just generally it's vacation and sick. But if, whatever you, whatever your employees would be entitled to be paid out, that's what that number represents.
Okay.
And there's a schedule, you know, that's prepared, that we reviewed and by employee that shows all those balances. And restricted, restricted net position are amounts that are legally restricted, grantors generally, and they can only be used for the specified purposes of $40,000. And the remainder is an unrestricted deficit of $1,472,000. Keep in mind, that's driven primarily by the other post-employment benefit obligation of $2.9 million, and also the pension liability of $1.1 million. The library has no way of paying those down, paying those down at all, because, especially with the OPEB liability, there's no legal trust available in New York State to fund them. So what the, what the library does in all municipalities in New York State, they're forced into a pay-as-you-go. So as you receive a health insurance bill that relates to current and retirees, you're paying that down every month. So that number unfortunately will continue to be on the balance sheet as a liability, and such time you're able to fund it. And on the same page, in that position or statement of activities, year-over-year, property taxes are the main source of revenue for the library. That's the tax, the adopted tax levy. $3,143,000 in 2020. Other revenues relatively insignificant compared to the tax levy. Revenues, $3,215,000. Total expenses, I'll show you a further breakdown of this in detail section, but total expenses were about $3.1 million, slightly above the 2019 amount of $3,230,000. And there was an increase in the net position of $124,000. So there was a net position, so to speak, at the beginning of the year, $183,000 decreased to $58,000. Keep in mind, this is on the full accrual basis of accounting. What I'm going to turn to is what we refer to the modified accrual basis of accounting, or your fine level financial statements. We're essentially the budget that's adopted. Many governments opt to pay more attention to those statements rather than accrual statements that I'm presenting here. So you see here, this is the governmental funds, again, on the modified accrual basis of accounting. One thing that's new I wanted to highlight for everybody, and this may be some of the questions that are coming up. This is a newly established capital projects fund. Previously, past two years, we were the auditors. The capital projects reserve was accounted for within the general fund. So you wouldn't see any of the activity separate. They would all kind of be meshed within the general fund. During my presentation last year, one of the board members, I can't remember specifically who it was, but we discussed creating this new fund so it would be segregated, so everyone could see the activity of just the capital projects fund. So that capital projects fund consists of, from the balance sheet perspective, cash of $781,000 and a fund balance of the same amount, $781,000. What that means is the library has set aside that amount of money to fund capital projects that, you know, where expenditures have not yet been incurred. So that's the value we used to be in the, used to be in the fund balance of the general fund. Carving out the capital projects fund, it leaves the general fund with all your other fund balance, reserves, and designations. That amount stands at $206,000. There's the restricted funds, which is the Reader's Digest Fund and the Slodginger Fund. Those total $40,000. And in the category, committed funds of $118,000, there's the Carol Burke and the Children's Room. Primarily, it's the Children's Room, set aside at $90,000, about $95,000. And you can see also on the, on the asset side of the general fund, you have cash, $512,000, a small amount of accounts receivable, and some prepaid expenditures, typically insurance bills that are paid before the year-end, that relate to the, to the next period. You have some payables, accrued liabilities, and amounts due to other governments. That's essentially due to the, to the school district to reimburse them for the retirement bill for the previous year, and also three months of the retirement bill, which will not be paid to them until the next, to the next year. So that's the $262,000. Here we have the state, statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance, or an income statement, if you will. In the second column, the capital projects fund, you see fund balance, beginning of the year was zero because this is a new fund, it didn't exist. So the way the funds got moved into here is an accounting transfer. So you'll see transfers out of the general fund, $976,000. All that money was transferred into the capital projects fund. Some of that money was set aside from last year, and some of that money was, was current year funding, about $260,000 of that. Other than that, the only activity in the fund is you spending down on capital-related items, and those were $195,000 during fiscal year 2020. And you can see the general fund revenues segregated in the first column, total revenues, $3,215,000. Total expenditures, $2,967,000. Of course, the transfers to the capital projects fund. And the beginning and ending fund balance, $934,000. And then after taking out the, moving to the capital fund, you have ending fund balance of that $206,000. Also, just want to highlight what I refer to as the budget-to-actual statement. So this shows the adopted budget with any amendments and transfers during the year as compared to what actually happened during the year. So you'll see in the first column is the original budget as adopted by the voters and trustees. And the final budget would be any amendments or transfers, and there were none during 2020. The actual results are what actually happened, and the variance column is the difference between the final budget and the actual revenues and expenditures. So you can see on the revenue half of the budget, revenues were initially budgeted at $3,176,000. Revenues actually came in at $3,215,000. That's a positive variance of $39,312. That means as you collected more than you anticipated in these various revenue categories. On the expenditure side of the budget, it was anticipated $3,176,000 would be spent. Actual expenditures for the year, $2,967,000. That's $208,000 less than was initially planned. So that's a, that's also a positive budgetary variance. So if you take the $208,000 expenditure positive variance and add it to the revenue variance of $39,000, you did better than your budget in the aggregate by $248,000, which is, which is good. I mean, you know, you've, you've conservatively estimated your expenditures and stayed within, stayed within those, those numbers. Again, you'll see the other financing, what we call other financing uses or transfers now, wasn't budgeted because it was really just an accounting item for 2020, takes down the fund balance. And again, started the year at $934,000, ended the year at $206,000. So that's kind of a brief synopsis on the financial statements. Before we go into the draft management letter, are there any, anything else I should cover in the financial statements, or any questions that anybody on the board has?
I think you were, may, you should have been told that there was a mistake in one of the notes as to when the employees could use their vacation time. You had June 30th, and it's January. Did anybody tell you that?
No, I know, I was told to bring it up at this meeting. It's under Note 3, Section, right above Section D, under compensated absences. It says June 30th of the following year. That was actually several years ago, is a one-time exception. It's actually January 31st of the following year.
So here on this page, it should say January, Jan, January 1st?
31st.
31st.
January 31st of the next year.
Correct.
Okay.
That's just one thing.
Okay, I have that.
Anything? So just, I just wanted to clarify. In your financial highlights, you had, as of the close of the current fiscal year, the library's governmental funds reported an ending fund balance of $987,451. So that was $52,785 from the previous year. Okay, so that's was our, that's our, was our fund, that was what we had left over from the last year, correct?
When you say the last year, as of June 30th, 2020?
30th, yes, the fiscal year I'm referring to.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And here on this page that I'm sharing, you can see the breakdown of the $987,000. $781,000 is capital, and then $206,000 in the general fund. And it's set aside for these, these various purposes with the residual amount, which we refer to as unassigned fund balance. It's $14,000.
That, that includes like some of the, not the, the money that we got from the taxpayers. That includes some of the money that we got from taxpayers, and then some that we had in those reserve funds, right?
That's correct, so if there's some granted money that, that's in here, the board set them aside. Some of them are restricted, so you can only use them for those purposes.
Right, right.
And then there's some money that the board has chosen to set aside, like my understanding of the children's room is the board has set that money aside to be used in those purposes.
Okay.
The balance of the $94,000 for the children's room that you have, where have you been tracking that, or has somebody been tracking that? That's actually a discussion we've been having, is how much money there really is set aside for the children's room. Has people, has anybody been posting costs for the children's room against a specific account? Or has it just been going against a overall capital account?
So Joe might be able to speak to it better, but he has like, kind of like, he keeps like a rolling balance of these, of all these amounts, actually.
Okay.
And he provided us a schedule, beginning balance, any additions, and, you know, any expenditures from those.
Because I have a little bit different number. Well, I'll take that up with Joe myself.
Yeah, so we'll take that offline. I'm just curious. So your, your schedule then, Jeff, is a function of something that Joe's provided you as to what, that is kind of out of that account every time?
Okay.
Absolutely, absolutely. There's just, you know, I was reviewing it earlier today, and something netted, netted in here, like a friend's reimbursement of some kind. I don't know if this is something you're keying in on, but the gross amount was $150,000, and there was a negative amount that was associated with this, so we kind of netted the two together.
Got it.
Down to the $94,000. I'm sure Joe has more, you know, more information on that.
Yeah, it's been a topic of discussion internally amongst the board members. It is how much of that $150 has been spent or not spent, and has, have things been posted against that account or posted to the general account that could have been posted against that account, such that we have more in the children's account fund or more in the regular account fund to build use for capital projects?
Sure.
Yeah, and I have a different number than that, so we'll, we'll figure it all out.
Exactly.
Is this something that needs to be revised here? We're concerned...
I don't, not really, because it's a matter of, like, you, you're saying that we had $94,480 left from that $150,000 that was allocated for the children's room as of July 1st, 2020. But I, from what I've looked at, that should have been, it's, it's, I don't think it, it really makes that much difference to the audit. It's just a way for us to keep track of how much we've used from that, that fund. So I don't think it's anything for you to concern yourself about, so.
I concur.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Lain, for the backup, so.
The amount that we set aside last year, do you, do you remember, Colleen, what that number was versus this year? Do you, do you remember, Colleen, what that number was versus this year?
Sorry, I had to unmute myself. I can pull it up. Jeff, if you just give me a second, I can take a look.
And I guess the related question is. Is our practice, you know, you said it's good. We have money left over, which I would agree, but I also am wondering. I know we had a unusual year this year. We had some retirements. We had payouts. I'm not sure how that all shakes out at this moment, but I'm wondering. It's whether um. Whether we're in the same spot we were a year ago or whether we're different in terms of how much we're carrying forward.
So I might be able to pull that up.
Yeah, I.
And then the related question is, can you give us a sense? Because we're always sort of wondering. We don't want to take more tax money than we need, but we have to be wise and we do need a capital fund, so. How, if you have any sense of where we are related to our peers in that practice?
So I would say about that. Assuming anything in your capital fund has been essentially accounted for, like the, you know, earmarked for very spec- for specific items that you that the. At the library needs to take care of. So it's almost like even though the cash is still there, it's in reality kind of. Really been accounted for and it's just a matter of time before it's been spent. So if that's the case. You don't have a lot of fund balance. Um, you only have a total of two hundred thousand dollars. Your budget is approximately. Three million dollars, uh, you know. Less than. Less than ten percent, less than ten percent in total fund balance. And most of these, most of your fund balances been earmarked for other items. The the common benchmark is the fourteen thousand dollars of unassigned fund balance. That's kind of encumbered. Um. You know, available for use for anything that that's necessary. It's really a miniscule number. So I I don't think anybody would suggest that you're overtaxing. If anything, you need, you would, you would need a little more there.
That's assuming that the seven hundred and eighty one thousand is earmarked for specific projects.
Yes. Now, if you've got a little cushion in there, then that could be a cushion.
I thought of the word. It's not specific, but we got enough capital stuff we're gonna talk about later that. It's spent.
So it's a constant, it's i- i- it's a constant item for discussion for the board and, you know, and it's something that we always review. How much is there for capital? Um, are you funding all your capital projects? And what's left over in the general fund? You don't, you don't obviously don't want to overtax based on what I've seen. I. It it doesn't appear like you have excess fund balance. It's it doesn't appear that way.
Thanks, Jeff.
So it's just curious, are we, how how many other school district libraries do you do audits for?
Um. I'm not sure off the top of my head. It might be a half a dozen.
Okay, so and and as far as like in comparison to that, that's what you're um saying that we're.
Yeah, I've seen much higher numbers in 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 fund balance. At other libraries. Um, I don't have that, those numbers on my fingertips, but just. Um. From from my recollections of reviewing them through the years. Other other libraries. Keep a, keep a lot more.
We're a school district library. They are association libraries and municipal libraries. That's different in how they raise their funds.
So that's that's true. I don't handle any association libraries.
Okay.
I wouldn't be speaking about that, but. Maybe comparing you to some. What what you're calling municipal libraries or non-school district public libraries.
Okay.
So they're still subject to the tax cap.
Right.
Similar situation with tax levies, so.
Okay.
They're similar, but they're also, they're also different from you.
Yes. Yes, so okay, that that answers my question, so. Anybody else have any questions on that? For Jeff? No one else?
So I have a more general question if no one has any specific questions.
Then go ahead.
So the the more general question for you, Jeff. Would be that there's always this disclaimer that you only look so deep as you can see and you're not looking through our. Um, procedures only to the extent that it helps you verify the accounting. Is there another service offering that you have at O'Connor Davies that that? That we should be looking at that we haven't? I've been on the board three years. I'm I'm what I haven't. You know, seen a proposal for anything incremental, but I don't know if you typically every ten years, every thirteen years. I don't know if there's a cycle at which you say. This disclaimer isn't going to cut it anymore. We will, we would recommend you do an additional um. Uh, audit.
I think we, I asked a question like that last year, Liz, and I mean, let Jeff answer, but he, they. Had said that what, you know, they do have other um. Different services. So Jeff, you want to answer that?
So there's varying levels of others additional services that we offer. Um. I'm thinking of. Once one library, a municipal library, we did what what's known as an operational review. He, and it was, it wasn't done by me. It was done by a different team that specializes in this, but. Um. A deeper dive into their internal controls. And and their and overall operations to see where improvements can be made. Um. And there's also. We still have teams of forensic auditors. Forensic auditing is probably not what what's necessary here. That's that's usually when. There's some specific allegation of fraud or wrongdoing.
Hmm.
Um, I have not. Heard of anything at this library uh in that regard. And. You know, no one, no one's brought anything to my attention and we haven't uncovered anything, so. A forensic audit happens when, you know. Something has gone already gone wrong. And you want to discover what what happened. Um, there's the operational reviews. Which is more of a consulting type arrangement. It's it's not really a test. It's not, it's not an audit. Um, related. Engagement. And it just goes much deeper into all these internal controls and policies and procedures than we do. Um, during the regular financial statement audit. With all that said. Um, some municipalities and some some libraries, school districts and other municipalities. Go years, go years and years and and never have these types of reviews done. So there's nothing, I I don't think. As an auditor, I would say to you, you have to have any of those types of reviews done. It would be, okay, the board feels that. You know, maybe there's new admittance, new administration, you have a new director. Um, maybe some board members have changed over over the past couple of years and they want to get a fresh look at everything and do it, do it, do a review. Um. If the board is interested in that, I s- I mean, I know exactly who. Would be capable of that your uh. A review, I could. You know, put them in touch with. With Andrew probably just, you know, even to keep provide a proposal and see if you, the library would be interested in going further with.
Okay, well, thank you. Anybody else have any questions before we move on to the um? Letter? No? Okay, Jeff.
Okay. Okay, is everyone seeing the report to those charged with governance?
Yes.
Yes.
If I do it wrong, it doesn't come up, right? Okay. So this is um. Some of what we refer to as required communications to the board. And we talk about. Uh. Accounting policies and procedures. I'll just go through them briefly. Um, you know, our our responsibility under professional standards, you know, we're we're forming an opinion on the financial statements. Uh, management and the board is responsible for for the financial statements and the fair presentation of the numbers. And the board is responsible for saying the proper tone at the top and. Designing and implementing policies and controls to prevent and detect fraud. Um. Having policies are consistent. There's nothing unusual. Um, or different that's changed from the previous year that I need to bring to your attention. There were no significant unusual transactions that we noted. There's some management estimates and judgments. Um, they're all reasonable. The largest ones relate to your pension. Your pension amounts and they're either determined by the state or determined by an outside actuary. Um, assets for, I'm sorry, depreciable lives for capital assets are standard and. And easy to calculate and, and you know, just in the normal course. Uh, your financial statement disclosures are very similar to last year's. They're. They're in accordance with GAAP. They're consistent and clear. Uh, we had no difficulties in dealing with management. Um, during the course of the audit. We did have some journal entries that were proposed. We've um discussed them with Joe and and sent them to him in advance. Um. There were no entries that we felt need to be made to the financial statements that weren't made or what we refer to as past audit adjustments, so we had none of those. Uh, there were no disagreements. The representation letter is something I wanted to ask about because um. In the past two years, we've had the executive director sign that that letter to us, which is the final. Um. Sign off on saying, you know, what what you've given us is true and correct and to the best of your knowledge and belief. And Joe would be the second signature, I believe it was Joe. Uh, the second signature on that, so certainly Joe can still be the the second signature. Um, I wouldn't, I don't know if Andrew would feel comfortable signing that letter considering he wasn't here for most of this, so. Um. And then I, you know, I. Just learning tonight that the treasurer is no longer. Um. You're kind of in between treasurers as well, so typically they would ask somebody on the board to be that signature. Um, you don't have to answer the question now, but I I will. You know, when everything is set and we're ready to go, I'll send it to Joe and Andrew and. We can either discuss it further or, you know. Come to an agreement on who should be signing the letter.
Okay.
Um, independents, you know, we're 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 required to be independent in accordance with auditing standards and we are, we are independent. Uh, and and we also have a section of the letter where we make recommendations uh or management comments, we sometimes call them. Um, in terms of how we identify management comments, we have what's known as material weaknesses and significant deficiencies. Material weaknesses are kind of like, this is a serious matter. You really should pay attention to this and address this right away. Significant deficiencies are, this is fairly serious. You should pay attention to this as well. Um, and then and anything below that is kind of considered a controlled deficiency or just a. A recommendation for for improvements, so we're not making any of these material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, so. Nothing that we consider to be um extremely serious, so that's the first thing to say. With that said. Um, couple of recommendations. So especially now that we've set aside this capital projects fund. Um, as of now, the way the books are being kept, it's all being kept in one. One trial balance, if you will, one set of books. When on under governmental accounting, if you're going to keep a separate capital fund, you really should segregate the two separate funds.
Yes, yes.
So that'll just kind of keep the two totally separate and distinct from one another. And it would allow, it would be easier for us as auditors and and hopefully it would be easier for the board to see the balances left in those funds. So that's really a recommendation. I I wouldn't consider it a deficiency in any way, just something to consider as you move forward. And the second item is also a recommendation. I I think this has been, we've put this in the past two years.
Yes, you'd have.
To have this done.
Yes, you'd have. And when I read this, I said, oh, we heard this last year.
I think the plan was to do it this previous year and then the pandemic hit.
We actually, wait, hold on a second. We actually did do an audit of the technology that we have at the. At the library. Um, I had, that was something that. Marge and Martha did. Right after, right before Pam left.
Okay.
They have a list.
That was the, this only went to Ju- June thirty first.
Okay, I, so we actually. I don't remember exactly, but we actually did go through the library and determine like how many computers and and all of that.
So I guess the question is. Was that, was that, was that counter um? Tracking that was done reconciled back to the accounting records?
No, probably not. It was much more of just a, what what do we actually have and what do we own? But they, at least the first step of that was was done that we actually inventoried it all.
Yeah, that that's a good step. Then, you know, if you could reconcile it back to to make sure the books and records have all that on there. Um, that's really it. So it sounds like you're, you've probably done the hard part already.
Okay, well, that's good.
Andrew, if you um. If you ask Marge, I bet she knows, she probably has it.
It's an Excel.
Wonderful to hear.
Yeah, it's an Excel spreadsheet. And the last thing they needed to do is take people's offices off and just put room locations so that it would be generic. And then we can do the accounting piece.
Perfect, thank you. So um. Just to, you know, thanks to Joe for, you know. Helping us through this audit. We we did it remotely.
Hmm.
A little different than we normally do and what we prefer to do. So thanks, Joe, for your patience and, you know, working through us through, you know, through everything with us. And we didn't pull any punches, so we still. Checked all our boxes and and checked everything we normally would check. We just did it. You know, remotely. Um, and then obviously we had a situation where Pam retired. You know, right before, kind of a little bit before we started the audit, so we didn't have the benefit of her being being there and Andrew hadn't started yet. So Joe kind of helped fill the uh, fill some gaps there, so, you know, we. We appreciate, you know, all the help and patience.
Oh, yes. Thank you, Joe, for doing that. We are grateful for that. And it's been, a lot's been challenging, Jeff, doing everything with this pandemic, so. Um, we totally, we definitely understand that. And. So anybody have anything else um for Jeff? So we'll expect a final draft of this or final copy?
So do you want to see a second, a draft to change? There's only the one change on the compensated absences, no? Do you, are you comfortable with us just after we get the representation letter, just issuing these documents as final?
What does everyone think? See another draft or accept the changes as final? Do I have a consensus of a? Yes, that's fine or no, we want to draft?
I don't need that.
I'm okay. Yep, I'm good.
And Lane, you said you're good with this?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I would, I would, I would suggest that because the changes are.
Yeah, it was a little basically like cosmetic, so. That sounds great, so thank you so much. And for joining us and for all the the work that you've done, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, Colleen. Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks for allowing us to come on.
And.
Sorry, we took so long. I just realized the time.
No, that's we, we allotted as much time. This is really important and. We adjusted the agenda so that you could have as much time as you needed, so. Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Colleen, and um we'll look forward to um getting your letter. Of um. Proposal for the, for next year.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Okay. So now we are um. The next on the agenda is the, we're going to look at the January twenty twenty one. Statement. And I may, well, can I have a motion to accept the January twenty twenty one statement and then we can discuss after the motions made? Nobody wants to.
December. Statement, you mean?
Well, the the, it's the um. Right, it's the, it's the, yeah, I guess you're right. It's the December. That's why I'm looking at.
I'll move to. To approve the December twenty twenty statement.
Right, it's the wrong thing on the agenda. Sorry about that, because I'm looking at it and saying, it says agenda, December. Okay, so you're moving that we approved the December twenty twenty one statement. A second, I'll second. Okay, so any questions on this?
So, Joe, we can't hear you. I can see you're trying to talk.
Joe, we can't hear you. You're muted. Unmute yourself.
I I am unmuted.
How you are, you weren't before, because I saw your little microphone and read.
Okay, yeah, it, it, I guess it wasn't showing on my.
Okay, yeah, I guess it wasn't showing on my screen. There's one correction that needs to be made on the statements on the the second page with the balances. I failed to update the bank balances down at the bottom. They're showing the November bank balances. Does everyone see that?
Yeah. I see.
So the, the total, because we received a, the, the final installment of the, the tax levy in January, the checking account balances is about $2,338,000 and change.
Well, we don't know the exact amount?
Yeah, two, $2,338,000 seven, and $317,000. Right.
That's the Westchester operating checking account. Is that what you're?
That's right, right. And then the other two accounts are slightly increased for the amount of interest for, for the month of December.
So can you give us those numbers, please?
Sure. The money market, the Westchester Bank money market is And the People's United is $250,948.
Okay.
For a total of $3,174,590.
Okay, can you say that again, please? Three million, how much? Okay, can you not, like tomorrow, give us like a corrected version of this, please, and send it?
Sure. Yeah, yes.
Okay, so any, any questions about anything from anyone?
How do you want to handle the vote? Are we voting on the numbers we all just wrote down?
Well, yeah, so I think yeah, of course, we're not going to vote on the old numbers. I mean, he's.
Sorry, the question should have been, can we, can we complete this motion or do we have to, based on what he told us? Or are you going to want to wait?
Do you want, or do you do a motion to approve the December statement?
As amended.
As amended.
As amended, we'll just.
Perfect.
Right, we'll do it as amended. So we're going to make a new motion to, okay, I'll move that we accept the December 2020 statement as amended. And then a second would be Liz.
I'm sorry, I'm raising my hand because I think we have to take the old motion off the table first.
Okay, well, we did take it off the table when we said, said we're doing a new motion. It was just a, so.
Okay, I, I don't know if, is that significant procedurally Robert's rules? Do, I didn't know if there was some other mechanism that we had to say or do.
Well, when we we.
Can, can whoever made the motion retract their motion so that we can move forward?
I retract my motion.
Okay.
Perfect.
So Lane retracted her motion. I made a second motion and who's seconding my motion? Lane?
I'm seconding your motion.
Okay, great. Nishat, do you have all this?
Yes.
Good thing is you can always watch the meeting on a recording and figure all of this out. And I'll double check Robert's rules. I don't have time to look it up right now.
No, we're good. We're good with the retraction.
I always have this handy, just in case. Okay, so anything else about this? And tomorrow we'll get a, a clean, updated copy of this from Joe.
Sorry.
Okay, if there are no further comments or anything, all in favor of the amended motion? Okay, opposed, it's carried. Very good. On to the review of the capital fund. Well, we already heard what they said about the capital fund. And I think we have to make some changes here. I started, as I said earlier, and I've been looking through to find the expenses that were related to the renovation. It's not just the quote unquote children's room. It's anything that had to do with, maybe that's the problem with Joe's number being different from mine, because when we got chairs and tables for the the cafe and the other and some of the other furniture related to the conference room. All of that was in the quote unquote $150,000 for the children's room. So we'll figure all that out at some point. And as I mentioned before, my estimate now is about $85,000 that we've spent. So that means we only have like seven, less than $70,000, not $94,000 left. So anybody have anything, any other questions or comments about the capital fund? We have to figure out. Andrew, do you want to say anything about it?
Just, I, I agree with the auditor. We should try to break that out a little bit, so we have more clarity on that.
Right.
But other than that, I need to go through the numbers as well and match that up with you, Ronnie and you, Joe, to see where we are with that $150,000.
And then some of the things were reimbursed by the friends. So I just want to, you know, because some of the, I know they, something that we paid for that was previous, I don't, I'm not sure which thing from the creative concepts, the desk, the reference desk, they're giving us, the friends are giving us money for that. So that should mean that we didn't spend as much also, because that could be part of it. But I don't see any place where I see where we got the money from the friends. So that's a little concerned to me.
If that desk was paid for between September and December, Joe and I need to get the reimbursement numbers to the friends to actually get the reimbursement.
Okay. Right, but I'm not sure. I think it would, we already paid for it. That's, I'm sure we already paid for it. Okay, so.
With you, Andrew, next time I'm in.
Okay, that sounds good. And just let me know what you've come up with. So moving on now to the January, is, nobody has anything else about the capital fund, the January bills? And that we have the pre-approved. And then I think, does somebody want to? Is there, I think there's a problem, we have to make a motion about the bills payable, but I think there's a problem with the bills payable. Is that right?
Yes.
So I'll make, I'll start by making a motion to approve the January bills.
Okay, I'll second that. So now there's a problem with.
There are a couple holdouts.
Okay.
So so I think we're going to have to pull that motion and redo it because we have three, was it three holdouts, Andrew?
I believe so. And I do apologize. I appear to have left that paperwork at the library. I know, I know two of them off the top of my head.
Okay, well, why don't you tell us the two that you think and then maybe Liz can fill in the blank of the third.
Pro forma, we just needed to track down an invoice that was attached to that check to get the total, the same with, let me just find this. It was a publishing company.
Roman and Littlefield.
Yes, thank you. We did find the Atlantic extra invoice and attach that. So that third one has been, has been resolved.
Okay, so it's just those two. Okay, so I'll withdraw my motion and make a new motion to approve the bills payable as amended with the, so we're, we're not including Roman and Littlefield and pro forma, correct?
Correct.
And now, who's that? And Lane's seconding that for me? Who's second?
And that, the, the, I apologize, I, that, the Bose, Littlefield, the children's librarian, I believe, or the adult librarian got that invoice right at the end of the day. So we do have that to match with. So it's just, I apologize, just performing it. I'm sorry.
So it's just pro forma and the Ro, Roman and Little, Roman and Littlefield, right?
No, we do have the Roman and Littlefield and the Atlantic. So it was just the pro forma.
Okay, so now.
But we, but we haven't reviewed the, the Roman and Little, the R and L. So I think the holdout is still going to be pro forma and R and L. I'm sorry, they're going to have to wait.
And the Atlantic then, then all three, okay.
And then Atlantic also?
Yes.
So do I have to make a third motion now?
No, you're just, you're just cleaning up your.
I'm just cleaning up. As amended, so we're doing the amending as we go along, correct?
Excluding the Roman and Littlefield, the pro forma and the Atlantic Westchester bills.
Right.
Correct.
Okay, so any questions about anything else on here? Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Okay, motion carried. On to buildings and grounds. So are we going to, Bill, do you want to talk to us? And Joe?
Okay.
Do you want to stay or go?
Yeah, I'll, I'll bow out of this. Thank you.
Okay.
Have a good night, Joe. See you on Thursday.
Thank you, Joe.
Thanks. Bye now.
Evening and all the best. So.
Thank you. Bye bye.
So Bill, do you need to be able to screen share? I know you've got a lot of reports to share with us.
Okay, I, I thought everyone had this, so.
We have everything.
They should. I just didn't know if you wanted to bring anything up.
We, we have everything.
We have everything, so we can just discuss it.
Discuss.
Okay.
That's among ourselves.
So the first thing on my report is we received the roof scan report, which I attached, and also budget estimates from Tremco. Okay, the high end of Tremco's estimates was I'm pretty sure we're going to have to file that with the state education department, which would then require an architect. So in my budget, I'm proposing professional fees in the amount of $25,000. And I also propose a contingency of 10% of the total project. So I'm suggesting a budget of $545,677.
Okay. Okay, well, the good news is that we can use the, get a liquid roof. So that's like the best news yet.
It is, it is, because that estimate a few months ago was over $900,000, so.
Right.
So.
Yes.
Is there, is there a need to the people on the Buildings and Grounds Committee, just sit down and hear from Tremco sort of the plan and timing and all of that?
Yeah, yes, if you'd like to, I knew there was a lot on the agenda for tonight, so I turned him down, but.
Yeah, no, I, I think it was something we could do outside, with just the committee versus the, the full board, etc.
If you want to have them come to the work session on February 2nd.
Let's just do it as a Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting, just to keep it smaller, shorter and to the point.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll come up with a time for that. But I think it would just be helpful to know, sort of have them lay out for us the plans so that we're up to speed on like timing and all the things that we consider going forward.
And I think from a neighborhood perspective, we just want to check on noise and when they're planning to do the work. Because we want to be sensitive to everybody in our immediate area.
And I would want to, I'd want to know, I'll be at that meeting, Lane. So, but my question would be like the impact on the the staff and the, the building, like how much.
Yeah, I think, I think they can walk us through that, but it just, it seems to me their smaller group would be.
Yes, there is, there is going to be some impact because I believe the report said that 16% of the roof is wet. So they have to remove that. They have to go down to the metal deck before they flood the whole roof, so.
You patch it, you patch, that's what I'm assuming, that they, you patch sections first, sections that were red on their infrared scan, you probably cut out and patch and then do the whole.
Then cover the whole thing, yes. So, so there is going to be some disruption.
Yeah, so we just need to understand that and make sure we're being fair to the neighborhood.
Yeah, I don't think that the neighborhood would be that bad, but you know, to the people down below it is. Sounds like.
Exactly, that's part, that's part of the neighborhood in my mind, the whole thing.
Sure. Sure, but yes, I'll, well, let's pick a date or you let me know and then I'll talk to Justin. And if you're going to do it in person or online, however you want to do it.
Okay, perfect.
Okay. All right, I.
As to, as to an architect needed for that, I mean, I'm assuming that's really just a consultant to oversee the project. So it was sort of like a construction manager?
No, I can do the construction management. The architect would just draw up plans that we can file with the state education department. And then do a final sign off at the end of the job.
Okay.
So we're, we're over a price point where we have to engage an architect in order for this to go forward. Is that what you're saying, Bill?
Yeah, I don't believe the, the state education department would accept my.
Right.
Maybe when we have the the meeting with Tremco, the building committee, maybe we invite, was it Joe?
Ramon.
Yeah, from the school board over, just so he can walk, help us understand, make sure we're following all the right rules.
Yeah, he's actually familiar with this. I have discussed it.
Yeah. Okay, good. So having him at that same meeting might be helpful as well.
Good.
Yeah, Bill and I will be meeting with him on Thursday anyway, so we'll, we'll talk to him and get work on getting something scheduled.
Perfect.
Okay, we ready to move on?
Yes, let's proceed.
Okay, the next is I solicited and received a proposal for custom bench to cover the heating, the baseboard heat in the children's room. And the vendor gave us several options. They were all under $10,000. Andrew and I made our case with the school district when we met last week that we felt that this was not the library's responsibility. I felt that either the remediation should come from the architect because of errors and omissions, but I know nobody's going to sue for a $10,000 bill. And the other would be a change order to the original project. Joe said the project was broke and they weren't going after the architect for anything. But he's going to look. Because I told him, I said, I said, well, my board's going to write your board. And he said, well, let me check again, so.
Okay.
We'll see if he comes up, if he covers the whole thing or a portion of the thing. I don't know. We'll see what happens. And then I've asked the, he hasn't got back to me Friday evening. I requested a proposal for him to make a small mockup of the bench, so we can actually see what it looks like.
Do we have to get like three different bids for something like this?
The cheapest one was just under where we would normally start considering bids. I think it was what, $9,700?
Yeah, what, Ronnie, we could, we could very easily call this a sole source.
Oh, okay.
Because it's a, it's a design build. We didn't hire an architect. If we hired an architect to draw plans, then we would have to bid it to three companies. But this, we've asked him to design. So yes, we could probably go out to a couple other custom woodworkers.
Yeah.
Give them the criteria and let them come up with a design and a price.
Well.
But let's see where we go with the school district.
Let's see what happens. And then maybe the friends would be willing to help us with this also. Because they could have a plaque on it that says donated by the friends.
Actually, we were looking at, it's going to be a very nice seating area.
I think so. And it'll be really nice by that window.
Yeah.
So. Okay. Moving right along.
The next thing is I wrote a. The next thing is I wrote a specification and a request for proposal for snow removal and grounds maintenance. I think Andrew mentioned this to the board, so we've invited four vendors. The bids are due next Wednesday, the 27th. And if anybody has a contractor you'd like to recommend that you know from whatever, somebody that's, you know, big enough to handle this type work, let me know and I'll, I'll send them a bid as well.
A question for you on that. Is, does this include, this is snow removal and landscaping, right?
Yes.
And part of, I think, what raised this was the fixed fee we've been paying to his amount, Kisco Contracting, to do snow removal?
Yes, he gave me an unsolicited bid, just as I told him we were going out to bid. And his, I have it right here, his proposal for all landscaping, actually a little less than I put in the bid package, was $32,000, which I thought was ridiculous.
And what are we paying now? Doing off top of the head?
I think that's about what we paid him last year.
Yeah, I think that is the current rate.
Because he kind of breaks it up and, yeah, here's his, here's his proposal, and he's got just a snow removal. And clearing the parking lot, sidewalks and putting salt is $15,400 for the season.
Right.
And, and then I lost the other page, it's here, I wasn't prepared to go through this, I'm sorry.
It's, I would, I just, here's my question is, with pay, apparent, my, my recollection from last year, because I remember having the conversation last year, was we've been paying him a fixed fee regardless of how much snow for years, I guess, and he hasn't moved the price in years. And so does it make sense to have him bid against himself? Or do you think he really is over, that fixed amount is really overcharging us, particularly in the heavy winter, or a light winter, or a heavy winter, or is it really on average about where things are going to?
I, I think you want to check the marketplace.
No, I, I concur, hence my question is, but do you want to, if, if he ends up being the low bid, do you want to then have him, give him the opportunity to put a new card on the table?
Oh, I did, I did. He has a new bid, he gave me an unsolicited bid before I finished the spec, and that was a little over $32,000.
Which is about what we're paying him now, anyway.
Yes.
Right, so I would, are you going to include him then in?
Absolutely, absolutely, yes. Yes, I, I have four vendors right now. One is from, is the incumbent. The other bidder is a recommendation from Joe Grumondo, the school district uses him as a backup. And then the third was the vendor from Mount Pleasant Library, who currently does their contract. And then was another, there was another landscaper that I know that I've worked with in the past, so I've invited him as well.
Okay, good, thank, thank you.
Okay. This is, the next thing is really informational, I don't believe we've gotten a bill yet, but hopefully we may be able to get an insurance claim about this. On, on January 11th, late in the afternoon, I got a call from the reference section about a burning smell. Andrew happened to be off that day, and so I, I went in and the smell was pretty much gone by the time I got there, but I did feel it was coming to, through the ducts. I inspected the mechanical rooms and I felt that, found that a return fan had burned out. The electricity had kicked off and the, and there was no fire, it just was the smell. And then I turned off all the power to both fans on that unit. And when I was done with my checking and I turned the supply fan on, that burnt up as well. I feel, and I've asked the vendor to put this in their invoice, that both motors were damaged by the extended single phasing we had two weeks previous by ConEd on the 30th of December. I know we won't get anything from ConEd, and I don't even know if it'll exceed our deductible, Andrew, but when we get the bill, we'll, we'll toss it into the insurance company and see if we can get it. The other thing is two of the small trees in the central parking lot were, were badly rotted. They were actually in danger of falling and hitting cars, so I showed it to Andrew and we had the incumbent landscape contractor remove them on January 8th. They were, were really inconsequential trees. Okay, walls contracting was in today, I met them early this morning, the, to modify that wall and then also to hang, install some shelves. Did they complete the work, Andrew, or?
I was caught up with other projects, so I didn't see if the shelving was fully mounted at the time. The desk was finished, the wall was taken down, they, they finished mudding the wall and everything.
Okay, so, and he promised me whatever he didn't complete, he'd meet me at 8:00 tomorrow morning to finish, so. We'll be fine there. Okay, and the last thing is this ongoing rooftop unit. The, the new one that I had put in just before the pandemic and we got caught with all the work stoppages and whatever. When they went to power up the heaters, they found that three switches in the existing power panel were damaged and were not usable. I wasn't aware of it, so it was not in the bid spec, we told them they could use those switches. Liz, this is what we talked about at our last Buildings Committee meeting, the electrical panel that at some point will need replacement. And this proposal, they, they requested a change order proposal to put 330 amp remote switches connected to the main bus bar of that panel. Back in September, they gave me a change order request for $5,300, which I rejected, I felt it was way too high. We went back and forth a couple times, met with the electrical subcontractor. They came back, reduced their change order request to $3,872. I sent it to the architect, the, I mean, the engineer, the engineer of record feels that it's a valid change order, that it was not in the spec, and they are entitled to it. So there's a change order to that project for $3,872.
So do we need a motion to, for you to engage their services for this amount? I don't think we did one for the $5,000, right?
No, we didn't, I didn't even submit it to the board, I rejected it, but it was too high.
So do you want us to approve this tonight?
I, I'd appreciate it, yes.
Okay, so I'm going to move that we engage the services of Atlantic Westchester to install 330 amp, three pole fuse disconnects on the distribution panel in the pent.
Penthouse.
Penthouse mechanical room. And I think that's enough, right, for the motion? You don't want me to say that, I don't have to say, and install the duct heater loads on the disconnect. So we're going to engage their services for $3,872. Do I have a second? Lane, a second, any questions for Bill on this? And discussion, okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Great, motion carried, so there you go.
Okay, thank you very much.
Very much.
Now, when will I know about the budget for the roof? Because, well, I'm going to meet with, with Tremco. They just installed a partial roof on Pleasantville High School, I'm going to go over and look at that with Tremco, and I'll talk to the, the director of facilities over there. And then I might try and visit a couple other sites in Westchester County.
So do you, do you want us to, are we, Lane, are we in the position to make a motion yet on, on spending over half a million dollars on a roof?
I think I'd like to just meet with Tremco and hear out sort of the whole plan, figure out who our consultant is, etc., and then we'll.
Okay.
The answer, Bill, I think your answer to Tremco is yes, we're very interested. We just need to, the, you know, our building committee would like to sit down with you and hear sort of the whole process.
Right.
And then recommend, make a, then they would make recommendations to the committee, to that whole board.
And we have, like, we'll meet again on February 9th as a regular board meeting. If we need a special board meeting to approve something, we can always do that.
Okay, great, thank you.
So I guess, Bill, the one question would be, is the team that did Pleasantville our team or not? You know, when you look at that work?
I don't know, yeah, I will look at that, because there's, you know, some, there's different Tremco installers around, so.
Right.
Yes, we will definitely look at that and any other projects.
Okay, so, thank you so much, Bill, for everything.
Yeah, just one last thing.
Yes.
In Andrew's report, he's going to discuss a meeting we had with Joe Grumondo. Would you like me to stay, Andrew, or?
Yeah, that would be great, because I think you actually have the notes from that meeting.
Okay, so.
I just have the general, because we're going to be meeting with the architect on Thursday.
Yes.
So, let's see, the next thing, do we have anything for personnel?
Not at this meeting, but I will have for the next meeting.
Okay, so do you want to do your director's report before I do my president's report? So Bill doesn't have to sit through my president's report unless you really want to?
Yeah, I, I won't even, I just figured I'd stay for the first part of, of Andrew's report, he can go over the, our meeting.
Okay, so, so Andrew, you go ahead and then I can do mine, all right?
Okay. Keating has finished installing the data and electrical wiring for the children's room, the young adult room and the new study room. They have not yet sent me the updated invoice to reflect the, the change order where they, they discovered the in-ground pipe and did not need to cut into the concrete. I've requested it several times, they said it will be forthcoming. The remaining shelves and reference desk in the children's room, they've actually now been completed, although there is an updated cable needed for the children's desk. It turns out, the electrical cable that came with the desk had an issue, so they have ordered a replacement. The carpeting for the children's room, program room, has been ordered and will be installed once we're able to remove the existing books. Bill and I met with Joe Grumondo from the schools to discuss the status of work related to the children's expansion room project in the young adult study room. The work on the roof actually began this week, it looks like. The work should be finished by the end of this week, if I'm correct, Bill. The cladding and sunshades are expected to be finished by the end of April, once the weather changes. They did.
Yeah, actually, early April, they'll start with the sunshades and they expect everything to be done at the end of April, the whole project.
Bill brought up several points of interest from the engineer's plan, or the architect's plan with Joe. The architect will be coming to the library to meet with Bill, Joe and I this Thursday morning. There was a discussion on emergency exit doors, the children's garden, the gate, and the returns in the young adult room that were all on the architect's plan, but were not, not actually completed. As Bill mentioned, the motor fan for the HVC burned out, Tremco has scanned the roof. We have hired, oh, I'm sorry, we did, I did have a personnel, but it's part of the report. We hired Kim Stucko as a substitute librarian, one, I mentioned we were going to do that at a prior meeting. We're canvassing for the staff assistant library position. We have decided as a library to continue our curbside and virtual reference only while the cases of COVID-19 are spiking so high currently. Westchester is now reporting higher rates than in the spring, which is a little disconcerting. WLS came and upgraded our network infrastructure. It turns out, the switch that controls the WLS network for the library was 19 years old. It was not adequate for running the equipment. That was brought to my attention by Network Support, which is our network support company. When I spoke to WLS, they came out within a matter of days and replaced that. Related to that, Network Support came in for our annual service. They made several suggestions to improve our infrastructure, and I'm looking into several of these options. I've updated the library credit card. The equipment for the young adult room, the technology, only a portion has arrived so far. It was scheduled for the week of January 18th, it has not come yet. So we do, we are reaching out to the, to PC University to see what the delay on the boards are. We've reminded them that we cannot pay for the equipment until it actually arrives. They seem to have a backlog, apparently, a lot of schools needed a lot of new equipment this year to, to do social distancing and remote learning, and so there is a back backlog. And that is my report.
Okay, great, thank you, and thank you, Bill, and.
Very good, good night, everyone.
Thanks, Bill, have a good night, I'll see you tomorrow.
Okay, so now the president's report. So I, at the request of the leadership of the CRE, they wanted to meet with me about programming, and I was happy to talk to them, and I referred them to Andrew, who's, and to, so that he and Joan could work with them. And the other, one other thing is that we did, I did send the letter to the town of Newcastle regarding the DGIS for the Form-based code, and we received three letters, emails in support of our letter from constituents. And the letter, the two letters that we sent will be on our website. But I also wanted to say something as I begin my official term as the president of the Library Board of Trustees, and I want to frame it around, in light of the library's mission statement, which I'm not going to read since we already heard it and we know what it is. And our main goal is to provide outstanding service to the Chapqua Central School District Library community. And I was honored to serve as acting president since mid-October. I want to thank my fellow board members for their support during the transition period with our new director. The pandemic construction and the change in the administration have presented many challenges to our Chapqua Library family. I want to commend the staff for their efforts during this time. As we embark on a new year and continue to reimagine library services, I wish to outline some goals for 2021. First, training of our trustees is a priority. We will be holding our first governance workshop on January 26th, led by Jerry Nichols, one of the co-authors of the Handbook for Library Trustees of New York State. And it is my hope to schedule a retreat or workshop for the board in late July and/or August as we set our goals with the library director. We will codify our committees and redefine, and refine our bylaws. I am so pleased with the contributions that the staff are making to our committees. This collaboration strengthens the work of the library. We have adopted a pandemic policy and have a viable safety plan created with staff input. We will be adopting a financial policy that includes a claims audit policy that reinforces the board's fiduciary and oversight responsibilities. We will be adopting and implementing a rigorous director evaluation process. As mentioned earlier, we will begin the work of the long-range strategic plan under the leadership of our director, Andrew Farber. That committee will include board members, staff and community members. Albert Einstein said, "The only thing you absolutely have to know is the location of the library." The community should always know where to find the library, be it in person or virtually. Communication is the key to that, and so we are undertaking a highlight of the current long-range plan that is long overdue with the improvement of the website and public relations plan to increase outreach. The communications committee is working on community connections and public awareness. We will work hard to improve communication to serve our community. Another goal is to strengthen our relationship with the friends of the library who do so much to support the library. Another goal is to strengthen our relationship with the friends of the library who do so much to support the library. Yesterday, we celebrated Martin Luther King Jr. Day. His words ring true for us now more than ever. He said, "If you can't fly, then run. If you can't run, then walk. If you can't walk, then crawl. But whatever you do, you have to keep moving forward." We are still in the midst of a pandemic, but I am optimistic about the future of the Chappaqua Library and look forward to working together as we navigate these uncertain times to provide the very best service to our community. And so I thank all of you and and this board, Andrew, and the rest of the staff. And I just want to say one thing, I'm taking a personal privilege. Last Monday, I had the thrill of doing a program and for me, it was an amazing experience to work with the staff and see how everyone does everything to make our programs work so well. And I want to commend Joan and the communications team and Andrew for that. So that's my report. And the next thing is the Policy Committee, which I will just briefly say that we, we will be, we have, we'll be talking about the financial policy and the and the safety plan and the bylaws at our work session. And then the committee, which is composed of Andrew, Liz, Anne Lim, Miriam, and Miriam Safran and Robin Friedman. We will be working on three, we're going to be looking at some of the other policies. So that's that. And now the Communications Committee, I'm going to turn that over to Andrew to talk about.
Thank you, Ronnie. The Communications Committee met on January 8th. In attendance was Shoray, Ronnie, myself, Denise Minton, Sally Scutto, and Amy Berger. Joan Kuhn has also been invited to join the Communications Committee, but could not make this meeting. Shoray shared with us an excellent sample survey. We will begin surveying both the staff and eventually the public for library usage and website usage. We've shared that survey with the staff and the library for any suggestions, comments, or improvements that they may have for that survey to help us move forward with potential website redesign, branding redesign, and overall usage of the library. We reviewed our communication tools, working through different versions of software the library uses for in-house use, publicity, communication, both internally and externally, our social media, and then the different apps within our website. We had a discussion on several different email lists, along with physical lists or physical mailing. We have reached out to the staff to come, to put together a press release for creative ways the library and the staff have served the public during COVID-19. We have started we have reached out to other WLS libraries to look at companies they have used for branding and website redesign and are currently working on a larger list with examples for that. And we are working on creating a plan for monthly messaging so that all of our communications are sharing a common theme, such as promoting Love Your Library Week in February, getting a library card in September. Overall, it was a very good and productive meeting. And we'll be meeting again January 25th at 2 o'clock.
Okay. Very good. The next thing is the 2020, 2021 to 2022 budget. So Andrew will start working on that and the Finance Committee will be working with him. That would be Nishat and Lane. So Andrew, do you want to say anything about that now?
I've just been reviewing, as I said, the different numbers. Ronnie and I have been in discussion about creating a budget line specific for both staff development, along with a line for board development as well. Neither of those are currently in the budget. Related to the staff development, I did want to mention, and I apologize because I forgot to mention this in my my director's report. But the staff will be attending a large a large training for continuing ed coming up. We just finalized that. I will also be meeting with the department heads in order to determine their budget requests going forward for the next year.
For the, for the staff development training that you're have, that they're having later this month, do we have to approve the amount that you're going to be?
So I'm not sure the technicalities, the, I don't have the final invoice from Library Journal. It is slightly above the $2,000 mark, but staff are paying for half and will be reimbursing that. So the actual cost for the library will be, let me see if I can bring this up.
Right. You have
Be over $1,000.
They're going, the staff will reimburse the library, but
Correct.
the check is, the check's going to be over 2,000.
Yes, so the total check, we expect to be $2,362.50. Once I have that invoice, I will share that with the board. That was based on our estimate based on the group rates, but I have not received anything yet from Library Journal.
Okay, but we have to approve you before that check, so we'll have to do that before you can pay for it. So do you need us to do that tonight or no?
Uh, it should be able to go out with next month's checks, so we should, we can approve that at the following meeting if that, if that works for you.
Can't cut the check until we approve the amount? Because you can't
Oh, yes, yes. So yes, if you could approve the library cutting a check in the amount of $2,362.50 for 14 staff members to take a multi-day workshop on fostering an anti-racist library culture, which is for 15 credit hours for staff development. Of that $2,362, the library would be responsible for $1,181.21, that's 25 cents, and the staff would contribute the remaining amount.
Okay, so I'll move that we approve $2,362 for the Library Journal staff development or in what I did say it one more time for Nishat?
For fostering an anti-racist library culture.
Okay, that's enough. Do I have a second? Shoray's seconding. Any questions? It's, yes, Liz?
So this is catching me a little out of out of sync because we don't typically see requests for per, for employee staff development. And I'm wondering what was the thinking behind having the staff pay for it? Is that because of civil service?
So staff informed me that usually they would pay out of pocket. But the cost was high enough that we wanted to find a way to make it more affordable for staff. In discussion with the staff, we were able, looking at the cost and the amount of money in our budget, I, I was able to offer us paying half. Ronnie and I had a brief discussion about that. If the library would like to pay for the whole thing, I would absolutely love for the library to pay for all of the staff development for that. But I was under the understanding that that was not a normal procedure for the library.
That was before you, we know nothing about what was agreed on. There's no, is this anything in the handbook that says what is done for staff development?
I would have to look through that.
I don't think so.
I don't believe, I don't remember seeing that, but I would have to look through it.
So it was just, it was just a practice, so do you have $2,362 to pay for the whole thing?
I could find that in the budget, yes.
So
I have to say, this whole thing kind of makes me uncomfortable because it's a, it's a topic that will, whatever we do, we should do it mindful of future training and costs and budget. And I feel like we're going to make a decision on I, I'm not certain I'm prepared today to make a decision on that because I haven't had the opportunity to figure out what are other libraries doing, what is customary, what makes sense from training and paying? And how, how much, so to me, there's probably a lot more thinking that I would want to do personally, but I understand we're on the hook for this particular training now, so I'll defer
It's some sort of like credits that they, for this training that carries with them personally, with some sort of licensing or whatever.
Yes, it's a 15 continuing education credits.
Continuing education, continuing education credits, such that if they, they need so many credits, I'm assuming annually.
Depending on when they, they receive their librarian certificate, some staff do. It has been my experience from every library I've worked in that libraries usually pay either a portion or a full cost of training for staff. And I have, Ronnie and I, in our discussion, did mention that this is something we should look into in our Personnel Committee meetings for adding to the employee handbook.
Anybody else have any questions?
Sounds like maybe a good topic for Personnel Committee. And I mean, I'm, I'm definitely in favor of paying for half of it if that's but if that's Ronnie and Andrew's recommendation, because it does sound like an important topic that maybe is
Right.
important for our community. And I agree with you, Liz, is I don't want to set a precedent or without doing more research, but again, I think training is something that important, that maybe should, at some level, come under the auspice of the actual library. Other than the fact that often you'll see like CLE credits, I mean, you, you carry them with you if you leave, so it is personal to them because it is part of their licensing. So, but I'm in favor of Ronnie and Andrew's recommendation that for the moment, on, given that we have short notice, that we at least cover half the cost.
Okay, so
Yeah, and that, and I, I'm with you.
You're with Lane? Okay. So, and that'll be something the personnel, one of the, we have a couple of things to, the Personnel Committee to work on. So okay, all in favor? Okay, so that passed. Very good. Okay, anything else? That's, and nothing else about the budget? Any public comments? We have three people who have faithfully stayed through the whole meeting, so we thank those three attendees for for listening. Anyone in the public want to make a comment? Andrew, do you see any hands?
I don't see any hands raised and nothing in chat.
That being said, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting at 9:12 PM. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting at 9:12?
Motion to adjourn the meeting at 9:12.
Okay, Lane, and then Nishat, did you want to second that? Because you had your hands up. You're happy to. Okay, all in favor? Aye. So motion carried, meeting adjourned at 9:12. Well, it's 13 now, but that's okay. Thank you, everyone, for everything.